Good evening. We'll go ahead and call to order our August 28, 2025 Joint Board of Supervisors and EDA meeting. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Ms. Green, could you take roll call, please, for both groups?
Mr. Bowen?
Here.
Mr. Walls?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Doss?
Here.
Mr. Seislo?
Here.
Ms. Moore? Ms. Warhol?
Here.
Mr. Ovaid? Dee Russell?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Perhala?
Please stand.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Members, accept a motion to approve the agenda or any suggested Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Seislo, would you like to take number five?
Okay. We have approval of the minutes of the EDA meeting, which were distributed electronically to have a motion to approve. Sandy? Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. And now, now we're on discussion topics, and I would just like to make this a kind of a conversational thing. I'll have some talking points that I think were distributed to y'all. I'd like you to know what we think we're doing, although sometimes I don't know whatever I'm doing, but I think we're doing some good things to the county. And if we get to a point and you have a question, let's just have a dialogue. So, our EDA now, we think what we want to do is attract new businesses into Matthews County because we are at eighty-four hundred people now, and our county needs more people, our county needs more business in order to sustain itself. And our second part of our goal or mission is to assist our existing businesses, small businesses as they are, although we have some monetarily, some fairly large businesses in town. I got to learn. So what is our, what are our targets? One of the things we'd like to do in the future, in the future, is an industrial park here so we can attract people to, or attract businesses to light in our industrial park, as some other counties have done, surrounding counties, they've done it very successfully. We have a water issue. One of the big things about attracting businesses to Matthews County is water, broadband, and where can we locate? So those are things we have to resolve. There's a Main Street Committee that one of our members sits on, and we want to make sure that things that are doing on Main Street are concurrent with what we want to do in the EDA. So that's, you know, it's got to be a parallel thing. We don't want to cross swords or get wires crossed on it. And while I'm doing that, I want to tell you one other thing. I'm going to segue here for a second. I've got a great team here. The EDA team is, they're really smart. They have a lot of good backgrounds. They know what we're doing in various fields of their background, so this is going to be an easy job for me. Okay? Back to the, so Main Street is one of the things. Now, we've been toying with or going around the mulberry bush with Virginia Scan. It's one of Sandy's pet peeves, Virginia Scan. It's an opportunity for other people from outside of our county to see what we have to offer for properties, for business locations, et cetera, et cetera. So later on in the dialogue here, I'll be telling you about how we're going to get more exposure through a website of our own, which will link to the county website, so that we can post these properties and post them to Virginia Scan as well. Let me tell you a couple of things that we've been doing. So with existing businesses, we've had some site visits, and we do these site visits with Virginia Economic Development Partnership. So there's a company in Matthews now, Mind Blown, and that's the name of the company, Mind Blown LLC. They manufacture plant-based seafood, and they are nationally recognized, and we're helping them with their business here in town. We have helped the hatchery. We do, the EDA does two things, loans and grants. So the hatchery requested a grant to build a floating dock which would attract more tourists to their business. We approved that last year. It's a very successful operation. Boats from Mob Jack Bay come in to the hatchery, and it's one of the successes. Ocean Products Research, OPR, everybody knows about that company. We made a site visit, and we talked with the president of the company. We brought VEDP, Virginia Economic Development Partnership. We brought them in to talk. Next thing you know is VEDP has Sawyer, that's the president's name, linked up with a company overseas in Australia, and they're doing trade shows down in Australia. So little things like that are very important to get the exposure of our county and our businesses to worldwide, okay? We've talked with Alcat. This is a company that does septic systems. We talked with Anan, which is one of the flag companies, one of the bigger companies in the town. John Low has another company that wants to manufacture, or wants to repair trucks. We're helping him with a structure to do that. The Bean Spot right across the street here, they're wanting to expand. Lily Valentine just moved their building, or their business from one building to another. We're assisting them. We're going to get a Matthews Bakery in town, so we're assisting those folks. The Inn at Tabs Creek, we made a visit with them. Matthews Materials, we made a visit with them. So we're doing these local visits in order to find out, is there anything these folks need from our EDA? So we've had some successes. We've had some, I call them non-successes, not failures. I call them non-successes. Why is that? Well, you know, there's a building up there where Mark Letchworth and Moens Building was vacant, and it is still vacant. And I made the overtures to the Gloucester Brewing Company. They were interested in it. However, it just didn't fit their needs, so it didn't work. So there was, you know, a back and forth. And the little green building right next door, somebody wanted to open a delicatessen there. They ran into some problems with, of all things, ventilation fans, so that didn't happen. So these are not failures, but these are things that just didn't, they were not successful. There was a, the delicatessen, Milpon Lane had two people, two businesses, take a look at Milpon Lane. I don't know if you know where that is. That's in the Cardinal area. It was a Marina, I think, at one time. Boat builder wanted to come in, take a look, and see if we wanted to build boats there. Too small of an acreage for building, for manufacturing boats. The second one was a restaurant. Not enough parking there, okay? But they're still considering the possibility of making this a, the military term comes in my mind right away, gedunk. It's a 7-Eleven on the water, if you will, so that people could come in and get ice and bait and stuff, and they just drive, they don't have to go all the way downtown. Okay. So what have we done to date in addition to those kinds of things? With Mid Peninsula Planning District, we have done classes for business planning. We've also signed an agreement between our EDA and their EDA for Delta Ville for an incubator for seafood processing. And so that's just happened a couple of three months ago, and we'll proceed on whatever that activity is. With OPR, we, I told you that we connected with VEDP, and we're, this is resulting in further business development with OPR. This is going to be a big deal. The grant to the hatchery, Mind Blown, it's all in process. And there's one other thing that the Board of Supervisors and us really need to get together on Haven Beach. We'd like to get that paved. It's a great tourist attraction, but you have to walk a couple of miles to get to the beach. And I, I've been pushing, and Louis up there in MPPDC has been pushing, and we'd like to see that happen. Summer's over, so we got all winter to work on that issue. What's going to happen in the future? Planning on a repeat class for business planning in the wintertime here in Matthews, as we did with MPPDC in last September. We've been contacted and have worked with the SBA, Small Business Association, Small Business Administration, and the SBDCs. They want to do an area-wide event and a business trade show, and I think we're going to pursue that heartily. And that'll probably be in the springtime. So that's about what we've been up to, and I'd entertain any questions, any criticisms, critiques, whatever you want to do.
Joe, and I guess we'll just do this by conversation. Develop the small industrial park. That's on my list, too. And of course, one of the, to me, the plum areas and the Cobbs Creek area. But I also put on there offices, because I think, you know, often medical offices, because often Riverside or Centerra will want a presence, but...
Love to have it, and it would make that overture to those folks, yes.
That area would be a good spot.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but industrial slash medical office.
Which, which brings up another point, you know, one of the things I wanted to talk to you all about. The property over there in Cardinal. So when I made the connections or made the conversation with these folks, it was still property belonging to the county. It's tax-deficient property. Nobody's paying any taxes on it. We own it. The county owns it. And I'm thinking it would be easier for the EDA to negotiate that property if that property belonged to the EDA. So I've mentioned this to a couple of your board members, and that's something that you all have to discuss. It would be a lot easier in negotiations. Now, the other counties have, other EDAs have done this kind of thing, offering enticements for businesses to come in. So what do you mean? Well, we can do a revenue sharing thing with you, or we can lease this property to you, or we can sell this property to you. And if we sell the property to it, what would that do for EDA? Put more money in our coffers that we can do more grants. Now, we have some monies, our treasurer, we have money for loans, and we made the first commercial loan, as far as I know, the EDA, first commercial loan a couple of weeks ago. And I can tell you all, it is a very low interest rate and very attractive to the business and very helpful to the business, which will continue with the project that we have in mind with that business. And I think we made a good deal with them.
If I could chime in, I think... Historically, we've operated in, as a conduit bond issuer. So the county can take a bond if it's incentivized to, because sometimes there's favor to issue a bond issuance. And then outside of that, if the county isn't pursuing that, we can then connect with bond attorneys to issue that out. That is not our funds that's being loaned out. It's the bank's funds. It's what it sounds like. We're a conduit issuer. The bond attorney qualifies them, draws everything up. The risk is on the bank, not us. What it does is it's essentially a mechanism of government that allows small rural localities to have an EDA, to be a conduit issuer, so a percentage of the interest that they're paying on that bond comes back to the EDA. That's where those funds for grants are coming from, not taxpayer funds. It's literally a mechanism of that conduit issuance bond. And ever since I've been on the EDA, we have pushed for an industrial park. It's been a matter of finding that right place and space and having enough capital from those conduit issues to be able to do that while still maintaining the grants that we have to different little community organizations that, you know, from the boat docking to Mayfair to Torrid Chesapeake, a lot of those things get funded through the EDA. So that's what I wanted to chime in, just to kind of...
Yeah. That's also one of the items that I thought about. I guess we haven't been approached to issue a bond in several years. I mean...
Actually, that interim financing came through the EDA, but they didn't take the one percent, or the point oh eight percent. Yeah, they didn't, because it would have been going from one pocket to the other, kind of thing.
Remember. It was before we were on the board.
Maybe we got a bad rap on that particular issue, and that is, people are shying away from us, but we go out and advertise some more.
No, no. It was the county. Thank you. People didn't realize it wasn't the county money. Yeah, well, that's right, but a lot of the audience did not know that. And that's why my talking point is, we really need to educate everybody as to what we do, how we get the money, and what we really do, because I think that's a big point, and people don't know. So, thank you.
Yeah, so one of the things along that line is with the placing businesses or business properties up for everyone in the world can see that, when, and this is not a criticism, please, but trying to get to, the Matthews County EDA is not very visible. So we want to get our own, and we're going to do this, we're going to do our own website, which will then link to properties, have all the realtors put their properties on, and link to Virginia Scan, and do a little advertising or exposure for what we can do for the companies in our county that want to move here. I think it's, and it's, Mariah was supposed to be here, but we messed up because we told her it's the wrong time, and she was going to have a little show and tell for what this website looks like. But it works. It's ready to be deployed. It has a QR code on it, so people get all the information they possibly want. Download the forms for, and one of the things in my experience with visiting the people, and I say, okay, so you need some help. What do I have to do, Joe? Well, you have to tell us who you are and what your business plan is. Business plan. Ah, I don't know if I know how to do that. So that's where the training or education plan next winter, this coming winter, we can try to do that. But more exposure we get outside of the county to bring people in here, bring businesses in here. I think that's, that's one of our goals. Main Street, yes.
When do you anticipate the new website going live?
Probably a week or two.
Will that be only commercial properties that you'll put on that?
Yeah, we will not deal with personal properties. I don't think that's part in our purview.
But commercial?
Yeah, only commercial property.
The one thing about this Mill Point, I think this is Mill Point. This is where the boat, there's a boat ramp, right? It's down in Mob Jack, Bahannon area, correct? There will probably be some pushback on that one because it's public access for the water, and I think it's one of the few on that strip, that part of the bit.
Don't know about that one, but we'll stick our nose in there, see what's going on, if there's anything for us, or, you know.
It's a ramp. People use it. Yeah. I have a friend who lives right across from it, and yeah. I think it was for commercial. I mean, a lot of commercial. So that might be a little, something we'd have to be careful.
So what do you all want us to do? What do you want, what do you want to tell us to do?
Well, I'll just go down my little list. We see a lot of chatter about the Islander.
About?
The Islander. And of course, it's privately owned.
Yes.
And I don't know if you all have thought about it.
Yes. We visited the, what, a week ago, the Islander Hotel. Did not talk to anybody in the family. Talked to somebody who knows the family, and this is what, a week ago or two weeks ago? So waiting for some feedback. They just painted the place. So something's going on there. I don't know what it is, but I really would like to get, one of the things I've been trumpeting is, we need beds. We need desperately, because everybody said, this is a tourist place. Okay, tourist place. So the tourists come in at nine o'clock in the morning, and have to leave by three o'clock in the afternoon to get home. Can't stay over.
We've got a lot of Airbnbs.
Airbnbs?
We've got lots of those.
That's a, okay, Airbnbs, that's an issue that we need to talk about offline, really. But you're right, they're here.
Oh, yeah.
Is there a central repository for where the Airbnbs are, or do you just Google them and find out?
Well, at that last meeting, go ahead, Ramona.
I have asked the Commissioner of Revenue for a list of the Airbnbs, and she said by law she cannot give me that list. So I don't know how we correct. And in fact, I have a question and to ask the government website that we use about how, how do you ensure that they're paying the tax that they're supposed to be, and how do you correct that? So the other localities are supposed to feed in how they deal with it, but I suspect it's all going to be the same, that they, it's difficult.
I'm going to be proposing that we may consider asking all Airbnbs to file annual, I mean, pay an annual business license fee, business permit. So at least we'd have a record of what we have, who's still in business and so forth.
I'm happy you're going to do that. I didn't want to be the old curmudgeon here, asking for the tax records of Airbnbs, you know?
Well, I don't think we're going to get the tax records.
Well, you know what I'm at after.
We have seventy-four, Alyssa, seventy-four that have obtained business licenses. The ones that have not, we have no way to track them.
And interestingly, we had a concerned citizen, this was when we first came on the board. He provided us an Excel spreadsheet. He had gone on and looked at Airbnb and VRBO, all the listings on the internet, and he came up, I think, with a hundred and seventeen. So we know they're out there. And, but we don't have the list. I mean, we have his list that he did a couple of years ago. We don't know if they're still doing it, but he came up with a lot of information. Many of them are not owned by people in the county. So it's a, it's something that we need to get our hands on. And the state of Virginia has very little directive on that, so it's really up to the locality.
Mr. Seislo?
Yes, sir.
I have been looking forward to this meeting. In years gone by, I had a customer in Missouri, and I would travel along Route 60 from Paducah to Springfield. There's a little town over there. It's Willow Springs, Missouri. It's only three and a half square miles. It only has twenty-two hundred people that live there. But that little town was resurrected by Jasper, engine and transmission remanufacturer. They took over a vacant building that was there on Route 60, and that put the little town back in, back in the black. So I would like to say to all of us, and even the citizens out there, what we really need and would work well in Matthews County is something that we truck in, we do whatever needs to be done, rebuild, manufacture, whatever, and then two to six weeks, we truck it out. That would really work in Matthews. The Jasper Plant has very little drawl on water. I'm not so sure about sewer, but that's just an example. And you mentioned Alcat. So they do something similar. They truck in concrete from Vulcan. They build those, those alternative systems, and once they're cured, they truck them out. So that's working here in the county. That was my comment. I did have a question. I was told, and I don't know if this is a fact or not, that Horns was interested in the Moens Building. Have you guys had any contact with Horns?
No contact at all from Horns?
That, that might be some...
Something to go take a look at.
Maybe, maybe. But thank you. I'm glad we're having this meeting. It's long overdue. Thank you.
I'd like to add something to what you said. We've met with Alan and talked about what his future looks like. He wants to go into North Carolina big time, so we're seeing if there are opportunities that we can help him with. Virginia Economic Development Partnership is just dynamite. Sawyer Hudson is, I think, going to take an international business trip to Australia to market his wares. This was only done in conjunction with the VEDP connection. We've just met with the Small Business Administration. They're offering similar kinds of programs. One, I think, is like possibly no-cost legal advice to companies that maybe need some startup advice, but there are opportunities out there. We're working with them. So, you know, we'll keep you up to date.
Did you say his name was Hudson? Sawyer Hudson?
Sawyer Hudson, yeah. Yeah, I think he's take...
He's president of OPR now?
One of the things that has always been a concern is like, what comes first? Because we don't have a labor force here. And that's the dilemma when you try to attract a business to say, oh, yeah, we've got a labor force because we don't. So to Mike's point about bringing in a business, the Flag Factory is one that has done that, and I know they have a hard time keeping, getting enough employees. But I, that would be really sweet, but it's the labor force that will be the problem.
There, VEDP offers resources for the labor force, too. They have a national, a county white conference where they have a job bank exchange, but we need to get that information out to the county.
It's the age of our population. I don't know too many people looking for work.
Well, you're right about that. We have several things that we're lacking in. Okay, we're lacking in water. We're lacking in broadband. We're lacking in skilled workers and the system, the school system to teach. Now, we do have RCC and workforce development. They're pretty good. Some of the companies, or a couple of the companies we talked to are willing to do training for new employees. And one of the companies we're talking about is bringing in, if we get this thing done, it'll be twenty new employees on a... on a three shift per day. And keep your fingers crossed, okay?
I wanted to circle back around with the Airbnb and VBRO. Those two companies actually take the taxes out of the transaction and should be remitting them over to the county. Okay, so can she give you that number? How much we are remitting from that?
She can, yes.
Okay, because I think that would help us.
What, what I, I said at the last meeting was, it was close to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. Not quite, unfortunately, because that's what we budgeted, but that's not what we got. But a hundred and eighty thousand, which equates to three point six million dollars revenue that's coming in. So it's not a small thing. But we just don't have a handle on it. Not everybody's playing by the same rules at this time. So hopefully, we can get a little task force to, to come up with some ways to do that.
Something that Ms. Russell just said. Is there any way to get some information from VRBO and Airbnb? On who operates in Matthews County? If the, if Commissioner Revenue can't give it to us, is there another way to get that info?
I don't, I don't think they can.
I think.
We'll see, I guess.
Well, the gentleman that, we, we have the spreadsheet that the gentleman formed. And he just did it through a web search. Vacation rental Matthews County. And just need someone to get in there and, and dig it out and do that.
Google them all, right?
Yeah. It, it doesn't.
That's one way of doing it.
I know. It's been done and, and, you know, someone could, could verify it and check it. Probably wouldn't take a day or two days to, to finish that search. I'd like to come back to the Islander. That, that is such a prized piece of property. And, and I don't know what has happened in the past to cause it just to sit there and, and maybe, sounds like work is being done. But I would encourage the EDA to follow up again with the Islander. And anything the county can do to help them come in, to open back up as a business, whether it's, you know, a limited business, starting with boats, maybe water access, to fixing up some of the facilities so that they can have overnight guests. I, I don't know, but I mean, they would have some type of business plan. And that's a very valuable piece of property. And then the other issue is Haven Beach. So often, these kinds of issues, when they, our county, we, we, we don't have all the employees, business development, tourism, that Gloucester and other counties have. We have to rely so often on individuals, volunteers to help us. So anything the EDA can do to facilitate that, we, this whole idea of Haven Beach has frustrated me for well over years to how slow it, it, that has progressed. We started off with a Bang meeting with Louis Lawrence and that group. But here in the last year to nine months, it just, it's so slow. And, and that's unfortunately, part of government. So anything you all can do to help us with that. Apparently, there's an article in the paper this week. I haven't had a chance to see it yet, but on, on Haven Beach. And, and trying to find out where people parked in the past so we could maybe cut through some of the regu, the red tape. Basically, we have two possibilities. We can park on the sand dunes, or we can expand the, the parking lot, which is surrounded by wetlands. I think non-titled wetlands, they've, they've told us. But, you know, that's a huge expense. But we do have some evidence that there was parking in both of those locations. And if we can develop that information, then we may be able to cut through some of the regulations by saying it's already been used this way. We want to go back and, and do it again. So just anything you all can do. I think you all can be more responsive than many times our government can be.
Who's the regulating body on that as far as?
Pardon me?
Who's the regulating body on that as far as what you can and cannot do?
Army Corps.
Army Corps of Engineers?
Well, I thought we threw the Army, okay, right? No?
Army Corps is regulating.
Well.
Where are the tiger beetles being mentioned? Is that Army?
No, that's, that's Bethel Beach.
Oh, that's Bethel Beach. No, I think it's.
Is it Haven as well?
Yeah, it's Haven, yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
At the last MPPDC meeting that we were at, somebody intimated that we had, or there was money set aside for the parking lot. And I've not been able to follow through on who that person, or where that monies are, if there are monies indeed.
What was the amount, do you remember?
Hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So I need to follow up on that for, I certainly want to follow up on the Islander because we can help them out. I don't know that they know that we can help them out, but it'd be something to, to connect with.
And it may be that they just would be willing to sell it.
Maybe they're not willing, yeah.
Well, they, you know, it's family owned and they may be willing to sell it. Or I don't know if they want to run a business themselves.
Part of the original problem was when they went to go rebuild, they were facing new regulations because from the time that it went down through Isabel, they didn't rebuild, and now they face all new regulations. What was offered to them quite some time back was the minute that Gonzales became a historic district, they could actually ask for a variance to not have to meet all of those requirements because they are contributing structure to a historical district. And even though when I say, not in the Department of Historical Resources was all in agreement on that, because not only is it a much newer building, but it's got historical and cultural significance for Matthews County. So that's what the last I heard, that was all they really needed to do, was ask for a variance to get around some of the building requirements.
Yeah, well, certainly, you know, no presentation is finished unless there's a show and tell, right? So I'm sorry, I apologize to Mariah, she had the wrong time for this. But she can give you a, a, a little bit of what this new website will look, right?
Yes. So this is just a very initial mock-up of what it will be. In my mind, it's a phased process. So phase one would be a, a basic site with, you know, different things that, that people can do when they come. When I researched this, I found that seventy-two of the one hundred and thirty-three localities in Virginia have their own, you know, standalone EDA site. So it's more visible. Right now, if, if someone knows to go to the EDA, they have to do five clicks to get to it. And so it's hard to find. So this, you know, would make it so they would have their own Google My Business and different links straight from Google. But when you go to this, it'll be interactive, but they can click on, how can I help? And they can have things like start a business, find properties, submit a property, you know, different things like that. The target audience, I tried to research Matthews as much as I could. I've lived all over Virginia, and so I know about different places and kind of how they do things. So I tried to keep the sense of place, kind of growing from within, but also catering a little bit to like site selectors or people that might be moving here. But again, fonts and everything, this is all just very basic and can be changed. Ideally, I would like there to be a video that showcases actual working being done. So I would like to do that. And then if we scroll, well, at the bottom, quick links so they can do different things. They can really quickly with one click, find out about incentives. They can go to, in the beginning, a, a smaller scale data center. Phase two, I would like for it to be more, more detailed with, you know, dashboards, with different things that site selectors or small businesses that are here or, you know, people wanting to start a business can get different data points. And so if we scroll down just a little, it goes into the next section. Because Matthews, I moved to Matthews because we visited and I just loved how it was. And so I want, I wanted that to be kind of, you know, the, the biggest part when you're starting the page. So it kind of just tells a little bit about life in Matthews and then business resources. So we scroll down a little bit more. And you can see, right here is a map that kind of shows where different things are. But if you click, there's no click right now. But when they click on interactive map, it can show the distance to different, to the ports, to the airports, to many different things. So that would be in phase one. And then scroll down a little bit more is where, and this is very basic, but just available properties that people can click to, you know, see all of the information about those. But that would go straight into a, a more detailed like dashboard of them. Quickly, see if you're eligible for incentives and get more information and apply from there. When talking with Joe and catering to the population here, being able to download, print out and fill out, but then also potentially online as well to reach the younger generation. Featured business, we have, I, when I was researching, it looks like eighty percent-ish of the businesses in Matthews are small, small startup, non-employers. But we have some pretty good earners in, in Matthews. So Ocean Products was one, I researched a little bit more. And so there's a whole thing about that. And then latest news, none of these are real. But just showcasing, you know, how there could be news that just updates quickly. And then that's a call to action right there, to sign up for the newsletter, to capture, you know, emails and the interest. And then the links at the bottom, but also would be in that kind of blank space in the bottom right would be links to visitmatthews.com, the county's website, and things like that.
Okay, thanks a lot. That gives us more visibility.
There was a, I, I believe it was a business, a marketing business in Newport News area that worked with the Middle Peninsula Planning District. They made a presentation up there. Ramona, you may have remembered it, about maybe six months or so ago. And they, they were looking primarily at the tourism in the various counties. And for example, in, in Middlesex County, well, even in Matthews County, they had just unbelievable data that they can garner from your cell phone. From the cell towers, they can see when someone from Richmond or Northern Virginia comes into Matthews County, they can see how long they spend here, whether it's a few hours or a few days. They can see where they spend money, if they're u- using credit cards or things. It's just amazing. And, and they said that they would, could come here and, and help us develop our tourism. I, I think maybe that would be a great place to start as well. I can go back into my notes and find out who that was. And I know Louis Lawrence could tell us who that was. But I was just flabbergasted. They, they were talking about, they were looking at the, Middlesex was particularly interested in the boat traffic going up and down the Chesapeake Bay between Baltimore and the Virginia Beach, I guess. And they could tell you, they can, you can have them focus on certain areas. And, and just like they can check on the highways, they could do the same thing on the boat traffic and see how many people are stopping to come into the marinas and have work done or just, just to shop. And it's just amazing. So I would ask that you follow up on that and see what can we do to, to build on that? Because we can, there's a lot of knowledge there. I think they, I think they showed that maybe, I'm just going from memory, which is not very good these days, but around sixty percent of the people who visit Matthews County are from the Richmond area. And then there was another thirty or so percent from Norfolk South Side. And then Northern Virginia was the other major group. But it was, it was amazing how they could break all that down.
Kat has a lot of that data. She gets reports from the Virginia Tourism Corporation. They triangulate all that data. Bank America, Bank America, all the banks, they review all the bank data, the credit, credit card transactions. So we can follow up on that.
Yeah, we work pretty closely with McVic on things like that. And we'll continue to and get that information from you, too, to, yeah.
The thought of the boats going up and down. I've been approached by several citizens recently by the interest in dredging Put-in Creek and making Put-in Creek more of a inlet to Matthews County. Some of us at this table probably remember when that was, when it was Wayne Hudgens' vision, which was great, but it didn't make it for some other rea, and I don't know why. I know the Corps of Engineers will probably be a big hurdle. But it would be worth it if we could do, I think it would change this whole downtown area. As a boater coming up and down the bay, to be able to dinghy in to a little town was wonderful. And some counties even had mooring balls and charged and so forth up in the northern part of the country. But I think, and I don't want to discourage these people who have an interest, if they want to go digging in it. And how do you all feel about Put-in Creek?
There was a yachting group that was coming up and down the Chesapeake Bay a couple of years ago that I was talking to a woman that was involved. And that was, she said, you all have no idea how much money you are losing because we can't get in even to get supplies. If we could even, you know, dinghy in over here, it's a walking community. We could get everything we need, a bite to eat, go to the grocery store, possibly banking, and then back on our dinghy and back on the boat. So there is a large contingency of people that go up and down the Chesapeake Bay. And a scooch off for us would be wonderful. We just have to dig it a little bit deeper.
You know, we have some resources in the county that are not necessarily recognized. There's a gentleman who was on the EDA in Chesterfield County. He was the biggest builder in Chesterfield County, schools, churches. He was the guy. And he has discussed this, I think. And we have resources that maybe if you wanted to call a panel together, that we wouldn't have to pay an outside consultant. But he'd be willing, or those people would be willing to share their knowledge. He wasn't too thrilled, thrilled about doing that. His take was, well, you cut out the dirt and then it piles back up again. It's just a loss leader unless you pile the whole thing with bricks. And so it's a multimillion dollar, blah, blah, blah. But we do have people who are knowledgeable who could comment if you would like to get a panel together. We could put a panel together.
I think that would be, might be worthwhile, too. Does the EDA want to put that panel together? Good.
I was around here when that, the, the first up, they tried to do this once before. And there were a lot of engineering factors that came in. And things that stick in my mind right now is, you dredge it, it's going to slump back in in a couple of years. Corps of Engineers said, not worth it. So, and who was it, I can't remember his name, Turning Basin here at, at the, where the pavilion is right now. So one of the things that came to my mind was So one of the things that came to my mind was this property down in Cardinal, which is halfway. If there is a place to resupply boats at Cardinal, it would do the same thing. But how do you get from there to town? That's another cat to be skinned. I don't know how to do that. A trolley? A bum boat back and forth somehow or other? But you're right, it's something else we should look at.
Well, one of the people that I talked to about Put-in Creek said, you need to have the bulkhead quite a ways down, and that's how you-
Right.
And of course, if it's used continuously or continually, it probably won't seep in. So, and one of the things a lot of us don't, and I don't remember this, but I am told that there used to be boats built, I mean ships, built and launched here at Put-in Creek, way back, way, way, way back, way back. So it's not like we're, we're just restoring it to its previous grandeur. It's not like we're taking Mother Nature and just tearing her all to pieces.
Well, way back, there was a parking lot at David Beach.
Exactly, same thing.
Joe's, I'm sorry. It's interesting that you would say something about a trolley. I, like Janice, my wife and I have traveled up and down the Chesapeake Bay a lot. There's a little town up in Maryland called Rock Hall. I have encouraged several boards to go up there and look at that town. There's not a whole lot. There is one restaurant and a couple marinas right there on the, I don't know what you'd call that, the waterfront. They got a really nice bulkhead. There is a family that started a trolley system up there. They got it painted, looks like a zebra. And for $1, they go to like five different stops in that town. You can get on it, go to town, you can ride around all stops, you can go to restaurants, do whatever you want to do for $1. And then on the way back, it's $1 now. It's been four years since I've been there. It might be $2 today, but they kept it, they kept it very reasonable. And Mariah, I would like to thank you for that. That right there, that website, if y'all can make that easy to get to, I can see that really being a boom for Matthews County. I appreciate that.
I'd just first like to, on behalf of the board, thank the EDA for all of y'all's hard work. It's clear, especially after tonight, of everything that you all have done and that you are doing. I'm also very impressed with the website. So a question I have is, the website is great. How do we get the citizens to know about the website? Because I think the EDA offers a-
It's right there in the front row.
In the front row. Mr. Hamilton?
We have a communication specialist over there. What do you call them, press releases? And once we get those pointers out there and everybody knows that we can go through this, you are a boom.
We're missing another piece of property that's on the market, is Davis Creek. And I wonder about that. And I look at that and think, wow, here's, it's semi-developed. I mean, as far as the bulkhead and the docks, a piece of property's on the market right now.
It's a commercial for sale, right?
It is for sale.
Yeah, but somebody's business for sale.
Well, it's not a business. It's privately owned.
Just a building.
And it's listed.
It's got a big waterfront, it's like 350 feet or something.
And it's on the list to be dredged. So someone who, you know, is interested in a long-term investment, we need more waterfront, more restaurants. There's not a whole lot, I don't think. It's, it's a-
Around a million, just over a million, wasn't it?
Called Rock Hall, Maryland. I know, when I was, when I was up there, they had that on the trolley. And I'm like, whoa, 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 we're the poor of the Chesapeake in Virginia.
Well, Cape Charles is another one that's done a lot. And, you know, people have, a couple people have said to me, hey, look at Cape Charles, go there. And I thought, wow, yeah. But again, they have water access, you can drive up in your boat.
But Cape Charles also grew off of federal funding. They are a, my brain just stopped, certified, certified local government.
Well, you know, I've looked into that, and I don't think that's that hard to do.
It is not. We brought it, Reservation Matthews brought it to the board about six years ago. It's not. But most people are afraid of it because they think it means cookie cutter, you can't paint your house purple, you can't tear your house down. It doesn't mean any of those things. The only thing I will say that when I visited Cape Charles, they did say that they overdid it because all of their buildings started to look the same because they got too restrictive, and now they're backing off of that. But it's not that difficult to do, and it does open money, federal funding into your community. That's how Cape Charles got to the way it is right now.
So I grew up like five minutes from Cape Charles. And when I was a child, there was nothing there, absolutely nothing. We didn't have Food Lion. We had to go all the way up to X-More to go to Food Lion. And it was like overnight that it happened. But they have really every single thing that you would need right on Main Street. And I just, I think that Cape Charles is a great place to kind of model, you know, what Main Street here could be. But yes, they do have, you know, like the harbor right there, but, you know, they've done a really great job and they, the properties are accessible. You know, there's a lot for lease. I don't know that that's the case here. But that helped, you know, a lot of people in my generation to be able to, you know, start their own businesses and have, you know, storefronts. Two of my cousins have businesses right on Main Street, so.
I think municipal water is a real hindrance to, to, without municipal water, I think it's gonna be, well, put it this way, with municipal water, I think it'd be much easier to develop our Main Street and to expand it. I hope we can, we have engineers looking at that now. We've gotten some preliminary indicators from the Health Department that we may be, they may be receptive, favorably receptive to grants because we've never asked for a grant from the Health Department for public water before. We just have to learn what it is they want us to focus on and then develop that. And that's sort of where we are now, is my understanding. And we're looking at, they're looking at, the grants focus primarily, and Ramona, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the grants focus primarily more on public health than on business development. But we have four, we have three schools, we have housing development, we have a nursing home, we have restaurants. None of them have public water. So I think from a public health standpoint, we have a fire department, we have a three-story building downtown that we probably need public water to, for fire suppression. So I think we have a lot of public safety and public health reasons. We just have to, again, get that ball rolling. It has started to roll.
The Rotary is going after a very large grant next year. It's part of the Wash, the Rotary Wash, which is, it's an action group within Rotary. And that's where some of these hubs of water are popping up from around the county, from some of that funding. But they are going to reach out for a very large international grant for Matthews. More to tell you when we find out more.
Oh, okay. So will that be, would that be a large grant, like for Whatever It Takes, a reservoir or water tower? Would it include that?
Yes. I mean, there's a lot of money out there in the Rotary Wash program, and we definitely have a need. Tim's in the Rotary as well, you're aware of it, Tom. I mean, it's a big undertaking, it's a lot of money, and I think that we are going to fit it very well for the grant. So we'll know more sometime in the beginning of next year.
Something that I forgot to mention to Mariah, you'd said something about a video. That would be great. When I first got on the board, within the first year or so, and Ramona helped me, we had a video that the high school did. It may have been about broadband. Okay. So I would think that those folks over there at the high school, they did an excellent job. And I would think they may be willing to help you all with a video also.
Were they students?
Yes.
I would love to get students, you know, to be a part of it because that, they're the next generation that we want to stay here. So as much as you can engage the high school students, yeah, that would be great.
And also, I would like to ask y'all, what can be done or what can we do so that the public does know what we do and we're available and we have grants? And, because I really don't think that a lot of them know. And I don't know that they know that we do contribute, like you said, to Tour de Chesapeake and Mayfair, and we help print the books. We've donated the little information books for McVic. We paid for all of that. We gave large amounts to the Boat Docking to promote the fire department. I try every time that we do something, I mean, we've had pictures, we've had this, but I really don't think it registers that it's the EDA doing it, so.
Funding it through conduit bond issues.
Funding it, yeah, funding it. And the only way we're able to make those grants is through the money that we've made through the bond issues. So my question and my talking point is, what else can we do for communication so that people know we're here to help and we want to help?
Be careful what you ask for.
Okay, oh, okay, well, that's true, too. But I just, I wish we could get credit for what we have done, you know? Yeah. This will help, yes. This will help, yeah. Okay.
I think all the conduit bond issues you can bring to the county, I think we would approve them on the board at this point.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But I'd just like for the general public to know that we write many checks, you know, to help many, many functions that are here in the county. And we're proud of it that we do. So I don't know, get a banner or something I can walk around.
Make sure the people who get your money know that they need to put your big number, big letters on their publications.
Yeah.
All their raffle tickets and everything else.
Can you develop like a, I see you had a newsletter on there, but some type of report that wouldn't have to be monthly, it could be monthly and be included in our board packets. And then quarterly or every, say every six months, give us a report.
To the grants, we did.
Yes, ma'am. If it's in the board packet, we could put it under reports. And then the citizens will get used to seeing that.
There you go. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
How about housing? Have you looked at any housing situations? I know we had talked a little bit among ourselves about the property that the county owns up at, yeah, high school, which is there, and we got to do something with it.
You're talking about housing for citizens of Matthews? Or more housing? Okay, well, that would come under that.
Thing I was mentioning, if we discover somebody that wants to do this and we discover some properties that are available, now, that would not be a commercial property per se. That could be a residential property. Would have to do a little bit of rezoning on something like that. That would be within your purview of the BOS. But we could work that. If you guys need to talk to each other about, are you willing to say, okay, that piece of property now belongs to the EDA, let them negotiate it? So, and it's a suggestion that I have. I think it's a worthwhile suggestion, but that's only because I'm making it. But no, really, I think it'd be helpful for the EDA to have, we are an authority, so we have the purview of doing that kind of negotiations with businesses who can come into town and make it attractive for them to come into town.
And I guess we would have to decide and really think harder if you want to make that residential versus commercial. It is, you know, in a prime spot for commercial as well. But we sure do need some, and the thing that's appealing, we hope, we don't know if Hampton Road Sanitation will serve that spot, should. We've got to find some wetlands on there, but we don't know how much.
So the, I guess we're down to number eight?
What's number eight?
We were having a conversation, so I think we're at eight.
Frequency of updates.
Right.
Well, how about quarterly?
We can do quarterly. Board members, are you good with quarterly?
Is that just a report or is that a meeting?
Are you asking for a joint meeting? I thought this was very beneficial, so. Okay. So you want to pick a date?
You know, basically, the EDA needs direction from you. That's the whole thing.
So we schedule the next EDA joint meeting? When do you want to do it? So it'd be springtime?
Quarterly, quarterly would be December.
Would maybe biannually?
Whatever works for you guys.
I would think maybe twice a year we do this. If you guys have something that comes up, then certainly come to our board meeting and let us know about it. Absolutely.
So why don't we look at some dates and then send it out to everybody to pick, only because that's right in the middle of budget.
Let's do that.
Is it December?
March, I'm thinking of March, so it's right in the middle of the budget. I hate to pick a date now till we have the other dates.
It might be good. It might be good to do it late January because then we'll have the board, the new board in, and we can introduce the new board to the, it might be the same board, but it might be a new board. We can introduce them and get, form that relationship.
Yes, ma'am, that would work, too. So we'll pick some dates and then send them out to everybody to see if it's good for everybody. Board members and EDA members, does anybody have anything else tonight? Well, again, thank you. I thought this was very beneficial.
Thank you.
I really did. And I'll take a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?